Hi.
I'd like to call this regular meeting of the town council to order. Would you all please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just for all.
Thank you. Roxanne, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gumbrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Mrs. McGrathen?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sam?
Here.
Eight here, one absent.
Thank you. At this, let me see, I have no presentations, resident property owners, if any resident and property owner who wish would rest the council. Seeing none, no committee commissioner board reports, comments at town councillors. Ms. Ingalls?
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make a couple of comments regarding the dust up around the planning and zoning seat. First, I just want to address remarks that were made about me personally. If you know me personally, then you know that I, I just don't lose sleep over comments or opinions of people who don't know me personally. An interesting dynamic occurs when one decides to throw their hat in the ring for an elected seat. You quickly realize that many who don't know you personally will turn you into a character in the story in their head. They may love you or hate you based solely on party affiliation. They hear bits and pieces here and there and assign traits to you based on the character you play in their story. I suppose we all do that to some extent, but for that reason, I don't lose sleep over the opinions of people who don't know me. Of the comments that were made, only one gave umbrage, and that was Mr. Woody's complaint. How many more times does this council wish to appear in the newspaper? So I want to address that in broad strokes. You may be aware that right now, Americans widely do not trust the news media. Headlines over the past 12 months include the following. U.S. ranks last among 46 countries in trust in media Reuters Institute Reuters Institute report finds. Forbes, fewer Americans than ever before trust the mainstream media. In The Economist, trust in the media has increased in the past year in countries other than America, that is. And this one from Gallup, Americans' trust in media drops to second lowest on record. This Gallup poll from October found. So respondents were asked if they have a great deal or even a fair amount of trust in mass media. And only 36% in the U.S. responded affirmatively. The party split, same question, great deal or fair amount of trust in mass media, 68% of Democrats. Only 31% of independents and 11% of Republicans trust the media. And while the Republican score has remained flat, Democrats and independents' trust is down five more points since 2020. Here's the thing, that a story shows up in the newspaper doesn't mean it's the whole story. And it surely does not mean that people believe what they read, see, or hear in the news. The bottom line is, I will not make decisions differently based on what may or may not end up in the newspaper. I have not polled my fellow councillors on this point, but I strongly suspect they share my sentiment. Those are my comments. I will have a brief admin report later on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors like to make comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Councillor Soms?
I just wanted to compliment yet again Damian Pollard or Damon Pollard and Nick Washington. They appeared in today's Thames River Times, and I just want to read a spectacular paragraph or sentence. It says Pollard, who was named a first team Eastern Connecticut Conference All-Star, three teams, and a Class M All-State selection twice, teamed with fellow senior and All-American Nick Washington to form one of the most dynamic one-two punches in school and ECC history. I thought that was great. Congratulations to them both.
Thank you. Councillor Rodriguez?
To councillor Ingalls' comment. Um, being a journalist is a noble career. They don't get paid much money. They do it from the heart. They strive very hard to get the facts and to print the facts. I take a little offense to that comment. The news media, especially printed paper, is where I get my information. It helped tremendously during COVID. I know journalist majors, I know students who are striving to become journalists, and they work really, really hard to get the truth out. To get all the facts, not taking what somebody says for granted and always verifying details and information. So I do take some offense to that. We probably have a reporter here. And I know at other meetings we have reporters, and they strive very hard to get the facts out. Also, on another note, I wanted to say. Unfortunately, there was a basketball game at the Ledgerd High School on February 5th, and there were some really disgusting, disheartening comments made to our girls' basketball team members. It was sickening, disgusting, and it. It was very sad. I am very impressed by the way our girls handled themselves. They held their head up high. And I know there is an event this Saturday that councillor Soms and I are going to attend. I think it's their last basketball game, and I encourage town councillors who can make it. I believe the games start at 10, but at nine o'clock in the morning, there's going to be a positive group of people who will just be the cheerleaders and cheer the girls on. I hope to make a poster that says, you know, you are awesome. I want them to know that as a town, as town councillors, we care about them. And we are very proud of our Ledgerd High School girls' basketball team members. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other councillors like to make comment? Councillor Irwin?
If I may piggyback on councillor Rodriguez's comments regarding the, the, the actions of the, the school basketball team, the girl, the girl's school basketball team. They held their heads high and faced just incredible adversity there with, with the abominable comments made by the visiting team. And I'd like to also put a commendation in for superintendent Hartling for taking swift action on that. His action, I think, was, was, was needed and very supportive of the, of the school system. I would expect no less. He's a great leader. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm also, well, I'll piggyback on councillor Rodriguez and Irwin's comments also. I was kind of appalled that that would happen in today's day and age. What I read in the paper this morning about it kind of sickened me to think that a visiting team would take that attitude or their supporters is, 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 is definitely wrong, not right. And I was glad to see the move, the move that was made by the superintendent to ban those individuals from stepping foot in Ledgerd School properties. Any other comments moving forward? Review and approval of private minutes? Oh, did I miss? Yep, go ahead. Do I hear a motion?
Councillor Rodriguez, I move to accept the minutes.
Second, councillor Ryan.
Thank you. Roxanne, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mrs. Gumbrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls? Andre, I think you're muted.
Sorry, I did the opposite. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Eight in favor, Bureau Post?
Motion carries. Do you have the communication list or any referrals? Council's committee liaison reports. We'll start with admin.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, admin met tonight. The committee agreed to take no action on updating ordinance number 300030, an ordinance regulating short-term rentals in the town of Ledgerd, which allows that ordinance to sunset on February 26, 2022. The new zoning regulation on STRs takes effect on February 27, 2022. The committee is working on updates to the policy and protocols for remote meeting participation. That will be coming before the council soon. Ms. Evans submitted a new application for Mr. Woody's recently vacated seat on planning and zoning. The motion did not pass. Several reappointments were approved, which will appear on the agenda for the next council meeting, and that is my report.
Also, at this point, I'd like to refer to admin. The communications policy. We need to look at that for emails for board members and commission members. Kind of remind them of the FOI requirements, so we may want to go look at that to encourage members of boards and commissions who do not have town emails to set up a separate email account to handle town business. That way, their email is FOI-able, so anything that they send to their personal email, if there is an FOI question that comes up, their entire email history would have to be provided, so they, we might want to update the policy to institute something like that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So to, through you to councillor Ingalls, on the, on the subject of appointments to committees. The previous conversation that you and I had regarding the rosters that were available on our website, and perhaps a disconnect between the rosters on the Excel spreadsheet on the Ledgerd website and what was being recounted in minutes as well as in the attorney's letter that we received about minority representation. Do we have any closure on that?
Uh, specifically to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Correct.
Roxanne? Were you, uh, can you answer councillor Ryan's question?
I'm sorry, did you happen to pass that to Roxanne or not yet?
She, well, we, we spoke about it today. I believe, I believe that the regular members are three Ds and one R.
And one U?
The one open seat.
That's a vacancy.
It's a vacancy, yeah.
Okay, and then for the alternates, it's?
Our two Rs and a vacancy.
Two Rs?
Correct.
Right.
So that's different than what's online for the the committee rosters.
Yeah, yeah, we have to go look at, because I think a lot of the, the committee rosters are not up to date. And that is really the responsibility of the support, the town supports, that you does that?
I do that. I, I will double check it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, last week, so I'll just double check it.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for admin? Community relations?
Community relations has not met yet. We'll be meeting next week on Wednesday via Zoom, so I have no new report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for community relations? Finance?
The town, this councillor Soms, the town council finance committee held its regular meeting on Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. by video conference. Finance director Matt Bonan reported that budget meetings have begun with department heads and that the auditing firm proposals would be received and open on February 3rd. The committee continued their ARPA funding project list discussions, adding an LED informational sign for Gilzever Firehouse, replacement of 25-year-old emergency operations center equipment and police radios to the list, and everything else is on our agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for finance? Land use. Councillor Paul?
Yes, the land use, planning, and public work committee met February 7th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. The committee, we had been discussing the ledgers appropriation for roads and maintenance, the repairs and resurfacing, and relative leaks and breaks that are causing ongoing repair. They require excavation and patching of the newly paved roads. What we decided was to take, Steve Maslin, the director of public work, recommended that we kind of show that he is working to address that with the road ordinance. So we agreed to allow him to do that moving forward. We also discussed, and we're going to continue our discussion regarding the public act of legalization of cannabis and marijuana retail stores. We're going to continue that conversation. We also we have been to pass a motion to amend the ordinance, I'm sorry, my handwriting, 300-08, an ordinance establishing planning and zoning permit. This is, we'll fix language in the ordinance, including the appendix of what we charge. Then the other thing that we did pass is on our agenda tonight, which is a tri-town trail that we could talk about later in the agenda. My report.
Thank you. Any questions to land use? Seeing none, any liaison reports? Councillor Irwin?
Yeah, the Board of Education had their, had their special meeting last week with finance. I believe it was, it was a public hearing on that, on their budget. And then the finance and Board of Education joint meeting is scheduled for February the 16th. The Board of Education's intent is to move on the budget, and so we can expect that in a timely fashion. There's also a lot of buzz concerning masks within the school and what's going to happen at the, from the Department of Public Health. It seems like most people are in favor of removing the masks in the school at the earliest opportunity. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for councillor Irwin? Councillor Ingalls, so your hand up.
Oh, yeah, beautification. I, I did not, I failed to prepare a statement for the beautification committee, but they met last week. They are working on the project to replace the banners on the light posts that go through Ledgerd Center. A couple of lessons learned about making sure to purchase the ones that have the wind slit, so they, you know, they're not so readily destroyed. They're working on purchasing brackets that are also sturdier for the weather and trying to figure out if there's a way they can freak, more frequently swap them out. Public Works is willing to put up their Christmas wreaths, swap out the, the banner for a Christmas wreath, and then put the banner back. But that's it, and so they're trying to figure out if there's another way that they can swap those out with more frequency. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for councillor Ingalls? Councillor Soms?
WPCA held their regular meeting online at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, January 25th. They are still evaluating whether to upgrade the current Koozie system or switch to a new billing system, and they're studying the cost to convert or stay with Koozie. A failure in a decanting motor, wastewater treatment plant failed and was repaired. Lakeside condos has also had, had a failure, and that was at the time still being investigated. The Gallup Hill Pump Station demolition contractor is beginning to pump out the, at, at that time was beginning to pump out the residual water from the tank, so they can begin taking it down, and hopefully we will finally see that old tank come down. And they have one item on our agenda tonight, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for councillor Soms? Any other liaison reports? Councillor Rodriguez?
I don't have a liaison report, but councillor Paul, did you want me to give the town councillor an update on the project that we're working on?
Um, yeah.
So as you know, this is Black History Month, and a special project is to have an essay contest and a poster contest. The essay contest would be for the high school and middle school students, and they can, it's not mandatory to participate, but it's all on a volunteer basis. And for the elementary school, it would be a poster contest, divided up from kindergarten to grade two and then grade three to grade five. This will occur between February 17th and February 28th, and then we'll look through the essays and the posters. Crystal Whipple has agreed to be a special guest judge. And this Whipple is a Massachiteqat Pequot Tribal Nation Tribal Council member and chairwoman of the Tribal Education Committee. There will be prizes and first, second, and third prizes for each group. I've been in contact with the mayor, with Mayor Allen, Superintendent Hartling, BOE Chair Anthony Favery, and everyone is on board. Winners will be acknowledged, I hope, by the town council in our March meeting. And I hope that the group of winners will be able to take a picture with Mayor Allen, if that's okay with you.
Of course.
Thank you, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for councillor Rodriguez? Okay, any other liaison reports? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, everybody. I'll just start quick with a brief COVID update. There's been a precipitous drop in COVID cases and hospitalizations. We're down to 50 hospitalizations in New London County. We are going to a mask optional policy starting tomorrow for town buildings. This is not Board of Education or schools. This is the town hall, the annex, the libraries, and the senior center, parks and rec. So that is effective tomorrow. Vaccination-wise, the town is at 73%, and just for perspective purpose, New London County is at 70%. The state of Connecticut as a whole is at 77%, and the United States is at 64%, just to give you an idea of where we stand locally. The federal test kits that look like this were, have been mailed out. A number of people have received them. These are the same kits that we received and distributed as well. And at a, a Department of Public Health meeting recently with our health district people, I mentioned this, and I don't know, you probably won't be able to see it here, but in that print, it, it reads that it cannot be stored or kept below 36 degrees Fahrenheit. This is a map of the, the United States. That red line represents the amount of the country that was, that was an average high temperature, was only in the 30s at that red line or above. My concern was, and of course, five of the nine most populous states are above that red line. My concern, of course, is that we have $8 billion of these COVID test kits going out in the mail. And what happens? They go into somebody's mailbox at nine or 10 o'clock in the morning, and when somebody comes home from work at four, five, six o'clock in the afternoon, and maybe they reside in a place like we do, where it could have been 10 or 20 degrees during the day, the chance of that kit being rendered useless is at almost 100%. So I was very disappointed to see how that rolled out. I think it's probably a good example of big government trying to do something that they weren't nearly as effective as how we did it locally. Not just Ledgerd, I'm talking about Connecticut as a whole, how it was distributed municipally. Our budget work is going smoothly. I've now met with all department heads at this point. I hope everybody is seated and comfortable, because right now, as the budgets are presented, and I have the Board of Education's proposed budget as well, it would call for a 2 mil tax increase, 2.0. That is before I start revising the budget, I will tell you that, but there is a lot of work to be done on this budget. I would also say that I received today the governor's proposed budget, and again, it's just proposed, but as you recall, just last year, there was legislation that was passed to, to call for full payment of pilot funding for the town of Ledgerd. And you probably recall me saying, I was told by our senator and others that that was in perpetuity. Well, I will tell you today, based on the budget run from the governor, it includes a, I think, $400,000 reduction in the pilot payment. So I think it's another one of those examples of maybe a lot of goodwill, but then somewhere along the lines, things change, and that, that concerns me greatly. So we will probably be going to bat for that, because that is, that is not what was intended. Senator Austin worked hard to get that number up to being fully funded for us. And it's unbelievable to me that in the very next year following, fully funded, that we would actually get a reduction. So that's a concern. We are going to be seeking an additional lotsip grant, that is the local capital improvement plan, transportation capital improvement plan. And what we are looking to do, they're looking for shovel-ready projects, and they are interested in infrastructure projects, so they are looking for roads and bridges in particular. And as many of you, if not all of you, know, we have a bridge that is 100% designed and ready to go, which is the Lantern Hill Road Bridge over Whitford Brook. So I've had conversations with Stonington. We have already moved it through the cog up to the Connecticut Department of Transportation just for a preliminary review. And if they are satisfied with it, we will be looking to submit that for full funding, 100% funding. The only piece of it that the town has to bear is the design costs. And assuming that the design does not change from what we had already designed, we've already spent that money, both the, the town of Stonington and the town of Ledgerd collectively. So if that comes together and if they start, if they believe that this project does qualify, we will be coming back to the town council for approval to seek that grant. That will give us a bridge that has been a problem for some time, and it is very, very poorly rated. I attended the CCM legislative meeting on the 3rd. They actually have 28 items that they are putting before the legislature for things that they would like to see changed or, or improved or legislated, including special education, post-production responsibility. So, you know, retail product responsibility for packaging, things like when you think about the, the propane canister for gas grills, that they would actually have a responsibility for those. Broadband access, virtual net metering cap, they want to see post-accreditation being permitted over Calia accreditation. Calia is much more expensive for our police, a whole bunch of different things. Another one that's a big one is increasing the prevailing wage threshold from $100,000 for a renovation project up to a half a million dollars. So that was really positive. Several days later, I held the COC legislative meeting. Actually, that was yesterday, and we had an excellent turnout of our senators, our representatives, and almost all the 22 towns. And the, the items that we had, we kept it very brief, understanding that they have a shortened session this year. We kept it very brief. We had special education costs, where we wanted to see the special education dollars follow the student, because sometimes, especially for smaller districts, one special education student can cost $150,000 or $200,000. And take as an example a town like Preston or Basra, where you've just got a couple thousand people and a much, much smaller budget than we do. It's a big deal. So that's one of them. We also want to see a move away from single-stream trash disposal, disposal that has not proven to be a success so far. We have a huge problem with broken glass contaminating the, the paper, and the reality of it is the paper is the part that's most recyclable. The glass is very, very low on the recycling rate. We are looking to see if we can get what's called glass cullet used in road beds, bedding for utility lines, even, even mixed into concrete, and even used for septic systems in, in place of the septic sand. It's, there are 17 other states they use this now, which is a, a pretty finely crushed, not sharp glass, and it's very, very effective for septic leaching. It actually, in some cases, increases the strength of concrete, so we're hoping. But Connecticut deep moves extremely slow. So we're probably going to go up there and push on them in Hartford directly. The other items we had was, of course, organic composting and delaying the zoning enforcement official requiring two years of experience and being licensed by January 17. by January first of next year. So we're inside of a year already. And in some cases, in many cases, uh, you you have to get two years of experience before you can sit for the tests. But some of them only have a year right now. So as of January first, they actually are not allowed to be zoning enforcement officials. So we want to see that just extended by a year, give us until January first of twenty-four. Um, we are working with uh now, I think we're up to five towns trying to do an updated aerial flyover. These are the uh the aerial maps that you find on our GIS system. Uh, our last one was uh twenty sixteen. It's been a while for us. So uh it's one of those things where you uh, you know, you have uh a value of having multiple towns when that plane goes up. So right now, we have about five towns that are looking to make that happen. Um, and then lastly, um, I'm disappointed. It's it's disheartening to to say that we lost one of our residents, Brian Joliker, yesterday in a horrific uh car crash on Route one seventeen. Um, the other gentleman, Michael Evans, is uh is on life support, so we don't know that he will survive either. Um, we've had, we've had a a number of fatalities on our roads in the past several years. And uh, you know, people need to slow down, people need to stop driving distracted. Uh, Counselor Psoms had an incident not too long ago, uh, within the last week or ten days. But people need to focus on the road, and I and that is not intended to be disrespect to either of the people in this accident. It's just pointing something out that it it can have something to do with it. So I do hope that people will start taking driving seriously, slowing down, keeping their eyes on the road. And I've already had a conversation with the chief to uh increase enforcement, even though we have been hitting a lot of the major roads pretty hard. And um, a lot of uh verbal warnings have been going out. But I think it's time to get past the verbal warnings, start ticketing people. When you start hitting them with with two hundred and three hundred dollar uh speeding tickets, it will probably change what they're doing pretty quickly, at least I hope. So um with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Uh, Councilor Rodriguez?
Thank you for your report, Mayor. I just have a quick question. Um, I'm not sure if I, uh, can you repeat? What is reduction again in the pilot program?
Uh, about four hundred thousand dollars is what was reduced. But in, so we were over one point one million last year, which was fully funded. And uh it's come down by four hundred thousand. So there was a little bit of a shell game going on uh this year with the budget so far.
And is that, is that the definite last?
No. No, I I I I only offer it as a as a reference point right now, because they just, they they just started their session today. The governor presented his budget today. But the legislature is the one that really acts on the budget. So um there will be a lot to be done there, and I'd really like to make sure that at least the things that were uh the things that were promised uh last year remain. So that's what I'm gonna be working on.
And how do we go about um, you know, rallying for that full coverage like we had last year?
Yeah, I I think it's, I think it's a matter of communicating with our uh senators and our legislators and and reminding them that uh it wasn't all that long ago, and I have it in writing, that this was to be in perpetuity. And that means forever and ever. And it's, I can appreciate not getting to forever and ever, but I cannot appreciate only one year. So that's something we really need to work on, and I I will draft up a memo that I will share with with all of you. Uh, and if there's a way to uh make that change with our legislature as they work towards a a uh FY twenty-three budget, that would be fantastic.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you.
Councilor Ingles, I saw you had your hand raised.
So I remember, this is about the moving away from single stream. I remember a few years ago, and I know Counselor Psoms will remember um the presentation that we went to with Public Works Director and a representative from Scara, and I believe the rep from Willie Waste, talking with residents about what can and cannot be recycled. And I went home from that presentation, and I had to dump into my, I had to jump into my recycling cart and pull some things out that I thought were recyclable. And I I'm fairly diligent about that. Um, the glass thing uh, you know, sticks out in my mind, because I've been recycling, you know, candle jars forever. Yeah, I mean, decades. They're not recyclable. They're not food-grade glass. I've been contaminating the stream well-intended for a very long time. So I'm not even a little bit surprised to hear, you know, that this isn't working. We, I think we all know this now. So my question is, what? I- is there a thought at this point about what would, what is, other than paper, and are, do you mean just newspaper? Um, what else is worth recycling and dividing out?
Right, so so the newspaper and cardboard is the most readily recyclable product. The the plastics, the reality of it is with the plastics, uh, very, very select number of of companies will take the plastics and recycle them, say, make it into uh, you know, plastic uh picnic benches and things like that. It doesn't happen that often. Um, what really changed was when uh China decided that they no longer wanted our recycling stream. They used to take our recycling stream, turn it into product, and probably ship a good bit of it back to us. Uh, but that changed, and with that, the market on a per ton basis for the recyclables dropped like a rock. And I think the the most recent one was five dollars a ton. And we were at like sixty-five dollars a ton for recyclables. So it's gotten to the point, and it's and it's going to change further still, where it it won't even be positive at all, like no positive dollar value. So one of the things we're looking at is um, as an example, the the glass, the bottle glass. Um, it can't really be made into like beer and soda bottles again, because when they re-formulate it, it's weak. So it doesn't have the ability to, you know, if a couple bottles clink together, and they're generally recycled glass, they're going to break, unlike the the more pure glass that uh they do use for bottles. Um, which is why a number of states have started coming up with a a plan to use the the crushed glass that they call cullet in different aspects, because really the glass is just colored sand that was heated up to turn into glass with silica. So um, that's one of the things. And then the other one, of course, is Willamantic Waste. Uh, well, they're not Willamantic Waste anymore. I can't think of their name, but um they actually fill rail cars in Willamantic, and they end up going to South Carolina full of glass, because nowhere around here is either turning it into cullet or uh melting it down and using it for some other productive use. So we've got a long way to go on that. Um, the other one that we are working on that I failed to mention, and I should have, is there is a a pilot in the works right now for an organic digester, which will take all the organics, including like paper napkins and and uh paper towels and your food scraps, and turn it into soil, you good usable, excellent soil for growing uh plants and vegetables. That represents about twenty to twenty-five percent of our waste stream. So if we can remove that, it's a big deal. Um, I think I mentioned in the past that Mira is closing. That's the the trash incinerator up in East Hartford. And when Mira closes, they they actually take thirty-three percent of all the the solid waste in the state of Connecticut. But they're closing at the end of June. And when they do, Connecticut Deep's plan is to truck six hundred thousand tons of garbage out of Connecticut and into landfills in the state of Michigan and the state of Alabama. And as far as I'm concerned, that is, that's no plan at all. That's that's like one of the worst things I could ever imagine. And just basically saying, we can dump it on a different state, and that's okay. And that's not okay. So uh, there's a lot to be done. Um, I, as you can tell, I'm a little passionate about it, because it's upsetting to to see that this is what the plan, quote unquote, plan is. So uh, we have a lot to do, but um I did find out that it it amounted to uh as many as eighty to one hundred tractor trailers full of garbage, five days a week, leaving the state of Connecticut to handle that uh volume of of solid waste.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Ryan was next.
Yeah, I'll I'll be quick about this. So it I I I find, I find your the uh your statement about the pilot, the reduction of pilot funds, interesting when the governor's going around and touting a historic surplus. Uh, so I'll be interested to see what the final number bakes out to be. But uh I have a sneaking suspicion, and it has to do with the fact that that historic surplus has mostly to do with federal COVID funds that they are, they are uh storing. So and and the general revenue, the general budget isn't allowing for the pilot pilot payments that they had promised. But um hopefully, we can come through that, because that that is important um to uh balance our budget, as as you have noted. Um, just a comment about that with the 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 current notional two mil increase. I think it's prudent to keep in mind that we just went through a reassessment period as well. And I know that there are many residents who actually saw a tax decrease, but there were also a lot of residents that saw a tax increase. Um, and uh so that that's worth bearing in mind, that that's a a double whammy for for many people in the town, or would be if it came to pass. But I know you put a lot of effort into uh drilling down on the budgets, and I definitely personally appreciate that, as I'm sure everybody else does. So we'll look forward to to seeing the final product. Um, I would, I would ask that uh you keep in mind, if you can, uh, any strategic ways to use ARPA funds that we do have. Uh, you can't use them, obviously, to offset a base budget tax increase or anything like that. But if there's any infrastructure or other investments that we can make that would free up gen- general revenue, um, that's something that we can look into as we have that latitude. Um, it's something that can help us be more sustainable in the future. So just, just a comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
It was about a one point five billion was uh remaining ARPA funds with the state of Connecticut. So that is accurate. And then the only other point I would make is, I think we are very grateful that we didn't delay, because we could have deferred our assessment reval year by a year. And I think we are fortunate we didn't, because the way real estate prices are going right now, it would have looked a lot worse for people.
Thank you for that.
Uh, Councilor Psoms, you had a question?
Yeah, um, I just want to thank the mayor for uh the comments you made this this time, and in a past report about considering going back or away from single stream, back to separating um recyclables. And for the record, around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we send a, signed a ten-year agreement with Willamantic Waste uh for single stream. And it seemed like a magical solution at the time. I I remember being skeptical, and turns out this time skeptical was right, because as we've learned um between that and the double whammy of China no longer purchasing our lower-quality recyclables, I really think we do have to go back to separating. And what I've been thinking we need to do is, we've got uh these huge recyclable containers that are picked up once every other week. I think we need to go back to, and it's gonna cost us, but I think we're gonna need to go back to putting paper and cardboard in that bin one week, and glass and bottles the second week, and the plastic goes back in the trash. Because there just isn't a way to figure out what to do with plastic, especially since there's no market for it. But glass and and metal, we can, we still get money for metal. So going back to that, I think is worthwhile, especially because the value of the paper will go back up. And we might see some more revenue coming back to the town for for recycled paper. Not a lot, but it'll be better than it is right now. Thank you.
Yeah, ex- excellent comment and great idea on separating them and alternating uh pickups for that. I wrote that down. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we have no old business. Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Seeing none, uh, new business item one, finance bill.
So it's Councilor Psoms, I move to grant a bid waiver to Russell Resources, Inc., Carham Smith and Lovelace of Maine, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, due to a lack of receiving the required three bids in response to RFP number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight Sewer Feed Pump System Replacement, Highlands Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Second, Councilor Ryan.
Thank you. Discussion?
So uh today, when we have to work on the sewer feed pump, uh, the entire system is underground, and it requires entry into a confined space below grade, which means that the fire stations have to be on hand to rescue people in the event that there's a collapse of the ground of the earth around the the uh confined space. And we also learned from uh Fire Marshal Mann that not only do our fire companies have to be on standby, we even have to have uh the military bay, the Navy um Fire Department, and one other, I forget what, but there are two other departments also on call in the event we have an incident. Um, so the solution is to put an above-ground sewer feed pump. That's what this is. And the ninety-nine thousand dollars covers the purchase of the pump itself, as well as a a stainless steel skid plate to mount it on. Um, it's a very spes- specialized piece of equipment. Only one company makes it, um, and it also has to be installed. And not part of this motion, but just for your information, uh, the uh WPCA is offering to be the general contractor to do the installation of the equipment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any comments, questions? Roxanne, would you please call the role?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you. Motion carries, next item.
Should have mentioned uh that also we're planning to pay for this as part of the sewer plant, uh, the uh sewer um sewer main upgrade. Um, so I move to refer the Highlands Wastewater Treatment Plant Sewer Feed Pump System Replacement Project to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee.
Councilor Ingalls, seconds.
Thank you. Discussion?
So as in the past with uh WPCA projects, the WPCA usually manages the project, but as part of our uh policy and actually in ordinance, we refer all building projects, and this is a building project, to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, who then has the option to assign it to a different group. Uh, WPCA has offered in the past, the PMBC has gone along with that, uh, and gladly transferred responsibility to the WPCA. But we still have to uh refer to them so that, because they have the authority and they make the decision. As soon as it does.
Thank you. Any questions? Roxanne, please call the role.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, next item.
I move to grant a bid waiver to Klaus Georges or Gurgis CGIS Mapping LLC in the amount of up to seven thousand dollars to complete GIS and Assessor Map Updates.
Second, Councilor Ryan.
Thank you. Discussion?
So um back around, I keep forgetting the the year, but it was two thousand nine, ten, and there somewhere, maybe, no, it was two thousand seven. Uh, we moved to a GIS mapping system, which um is an online mapping system for all town properties, shows property lines, lot sizes, and a lot of other other information. As um development projects are approved, as uh new information becomes available with wetlands mapping and many other layers, uh, that system needs to be updated. And we've been trying to do this for years and years. Uh, Klaus Gurgis is a former employee of People GIS. Uh, he's very familiar with the system. He formed his own company to do this kind of work. And because so many years have gone by uh without the GIS maps being updated, it's a monumental task. At one point, uh, we had information that it would cost eleven thousand dollars to do it. So this is not only uh an urgent need, it's actually a reduction in cost. And we want to grant the bid waiver, because we believe that Mr. Gurgis and his company are the only ones who can do this. The good news is that once we update and have everything up to date, we can go back to putting it out to bid, and it's not such a um, a cumbersome A cumbersome task, and we'll be able to put it out to bid and get better pricing on it in the future. But we think this is a good deal, long overdue, and a small amount of money to to get our maps up to date. And the final thing I'll say is there is a cost to not having your GIS maps up to date. Sometimes property lines are off, and they are with our current maps, so you get into neighbor disputes. You can have problems with developers looking at the system, making bad decisions based on old information. So there is a cost associated with not keeping it up to date.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Rodriguez?
Not a question, but a comment. I concur with Counselor Psoms. We really need an updated GIS map. I am working on a project for land use, and I really could use an updated map. Well, I do have a question. When do you think this will finally be updated?
The mayor may know better, but I believe that the town planner is planning to start this right away, and I think it's a matter of a few months. Is that time right, Fred?
Exactly. He said a maximum of four months.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mr. Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I move to authorize the land use director to issue a waiver in the amount of five hundred dollars to Mr. Paul Mogul, eight twenty seven Colonel Legerd Highway Legerd, to be applied to another application.
Second, Counselor Ingalls.
Discussion?
Thank you. So Mr. Mogul received a notice, as did many other landlords, landlords, I'm sorry, property owners in Legerd. The the use of their property was not in compliance with current zoning regulations. And he interpreted that as a cease and desist, and he filed an application to continue what he's been doing for the last fifteen years on his property without change. The application itself requires some legal work. It required work on the on the part of town staff. And when when we sorted through all the weeds, if you will. Everyone realized that filing the application was a mistake. It was premature, and Mr. Mogul should have waited. However. We think that mistakes were made on both sides and that he should get his money back in some form. And the land use director has, I'm sorry, the planning director has recommended that we issue this. This waiver to him so that the five hundred dollars can be applied when he does need to file his application when the time is right. There's a sixty dollar fee that went to the state that we're not going to get back, and neither is Mr. Mogul, and he understands that just because it's not refundable. And as a result of this, we also had to change an ordinance so that the same mistake doesn't happen again. We considered refunding his money, but that would have set a terrible precedent because. Developers often will make a proposal, file an application. And then decide to withdraw the application and submit a new one. And if we were to issue a refund in this case, it would be setting a precedent of of to all developers being able to. Incur a cost, the town to incur cost on behalf of the developer. And then the developer get their money back, and it's certainly not what we want to do. But we do think it's fair because of the mistakes on both sides that we apply this money. To Mr. Mogul's application when it is in fact the right time to apply.
Thank you. Any questions? Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
You're muted, Audrey.
I'm over my capacity for the night. Yes. Sorry.
Okay.
We allowed one.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I move to transfer seventy five thousand dollars to account two one zero one four three zero one dash five three three four two T zero 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 one. Town Green Upgrade from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding for the Town Green Upgrade Project, period.
Second, Counselor Ryan.
Discussion?
So we've encountered cost up, cost increases in a project that is well underway, which is the. Reconfiguration of the Town Green and enhancements that we're making to it. This is due in part to the pandemic. It's due in part to labor shortages. It's due in part to inflation. And the cost of materials going up. In some cases, contractor costs are going up as much as twenty percent. We discussed several ways to pay for this. And we decided the best way to do it is to use money from the ARPA funds. As opposed to taking out of the towns as an undesignated fund. We could do that, but we are trying to increase our undesignated fund to a level of ten percent. So that when we have to bond, we get good rates on on bonds, and if we don't maintain a good on this. An undesigned fund balance, we pay more when we borrow large sums of money. So we felt this is the best way to cover the cost. We can't stop the project in the middle. So we hope to continue it and complete it shortly.
Questions? Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Next item, land use. Counselor Paul?
I move to adopt a proposed resolution, Town of Legerd endorsement to participate in the Greenway nomination. Of the Tri-Town Trail Greenway, and the Connecticut Greenway Council has contained in the draft dated December twenty first, two thousand and twenty one.
Second by Counselor Rodriguez.
Thank you. Discussion?
So this would. This would nominate the Tri-Town Trail for designated as a as a greenway. This has to be done. It has to be endorsed by the town council. Through a municipal resolution in order to get that. This doesn't, you know, this would include, you know, from Preston Plains Park up to Bluff Point. This does not place any additional restrictions on future use or anything by the town or private landowners. But what it does do is it enhances their possibility of getting grants. For construction of trails or purchase of like other land to connect and and grow the the Greenway. For that, and it is in, if you look at the Legerd Plan of Conservation and Development, it is in line with that. And their goals, you can see that if you want to look it up on page fifteen or forty two. To do that.
Very good. Any questions? Roxanne, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Psoms?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Would anybody like to make the next motion?
Counselor Rodriguez makes a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned without exception. Thank you, everyone.
You guys are funny. Good night.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening.